Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Business Meeting for Monday, March the 14th, 2022. We will say welcome to our viewing audience that's joining us live stream. I will call the meeting to order and ask all to please stand for our presentation of colors.
Presenting tonight's colors are members of the Mount Pleasant High School Air Force JROTC program, and their personnel includes Cadet Chief Master Sergeant Austin Love, Cadet Master Sergeant Hiram Mejia Lopez, Cadet Master Sergeant Cameron Gillum, and Cadet Staff Sergeant Diana Soriano Torres. Honoring America tonight with the singing of our National Anthem were members of the Mount Pleasant Elementary School Chorus, and their personnel includes Addie Baxter, Reese Parnell, Gwen Elders, Easton Albertson, Xander Zacharolo, Kylie Boger, Millie Blake, Isaiah Darbit, Ava Hill, Kendall Warren, April Green, Adeline Leonard, Braylon Leonard, Chloe Sartain, Zer Lee, Lily George, Cherokee Talia Stokes, Aubrey Strike Leather, Tristan Atkins, Elijah Darbit, Kaylee Robinson, Rowan Barnett, Alyssa Safrat, Molly Han, Andrew Dozier, Aiden McGuire, and Annie Starnes. The Director of the Mount Pleasant Elementary Chorus is Mr. Buddy Gregg. Thank you.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Board Members, due to an issue with the minutes being loaded to Board Docs, we are going to pull Item Number Five and place that on the April Agenda. So may I have a motion that the Agenda be approved with that correction made, please?
Same.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Mr. Farr. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. We will move to Items Under Number Four, our recognitions, and we will begin with 4.01, our Impact Through Education Awards, and we will have Mrs. Ronnie Boone to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening. Tonight, we will present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Wolf Meadow Elementary School and Mount Pleasant High School. Our sponsors for the Impact Awards are our friends at Equitable, and at this time, I'd like to invite our Equitable representatives Emily Satterly and Attorney Gallman to please come forward. Still just you? Okay, well, that's okay. We're happy that you're here, and we thank you for your support of this program. Now, we're going to move on to tonight's awards. We'll begin with Wolf Meadow Elementary School, and I'd like the Principal of Wolf Meadow Elementary to please come forward to stand with her students and staff. Our first honoree from Wolf Meadow Elementary School this evening is Bentley Davis. Would Bentley please come forward with your family? Bentley is a fifth grader at Wolf Meadow Elementary School. He has been a phenomenal student throughout his elementary career. Bentley is consistently kind to his peers and always respectful toward adults. He works hard and loves to learn. He perseveres not only until he masters a skill, but he won't stop until he helps his peers understand as well. Bentley spreads his kindness throughout the school, and you can often find him helping a peer when they've misplaced something, cheering up his friends when they're feeling a little bit down, being a role model as a member of the Safety Patrol, or assisting a teacher with a helping hand when he sees that their hands may be just a little too full. Bentley is an exemplary leader in and out of school. His teachers say he demonstrates determination in all that he does. He puts forth 100% effort in academics, sports, and friendships. He's always prepared personally and always willing to lend a helping hand to others. The staff and students who work with Bentley describe him as smart, patient, accepting, and hardworking. Bentley stands out amongst his peers and is an overall joy to teach and know. The staff and teachers at Wolf Meadow have no doubt that Bentley will continue to grow, mature, and impact his future and the future of others in a positive way. Congratulations on receiving this Impact Through Education Award.
Congratulations. Good job.
Our next honoree is Callie Williams. Would Callie please come forward with her family? Callie is an outstanding second-grade student at Wolf Meadow Elementary. She exemplifies the character trait of compassion. She has such a kind heart and strives each day to spread kindness. Her teachers have been amazed by her empathy and compassion since kindergarten. Callie's determination and kindness allow her to make an impact through education every day at Wolf Meadow Elementary School. She is emotionally mature beyond her years and shows empathy to those around her. She is respectful of herself, her classmates, and her teachers. Callie is a dual-language student and works hard to learn and use the Spanish language in addition to reading, writing, science, math, and social studies. She's a determined young girl who overcomes challenges and difficulties to be the best she can be. Callie is full of potential and has recently mentioned being in the Army one day so that she can protect others. She helps others in the classroom, on the playground, and at home. She also excels in her academics thanks to her persevering attitude to succeed. Callie is a leader in the classroom. She exemplifies what it means to be the nice kid each day. She is honest, works hard, and shows responsibility in her actions and words every day. She's an awesome Wolf Meadow student, and we congratulate her on this Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good job.
Our next Wolf Meadow honoree is Mr. Robert Richter. Would Mr. Richter please come forward with his family? Mr. Richter, also known as Commander Richter, is a teacher leader and cornerstone educator at Wolf Meadow Elementary. Mr. Richter knows that student success is built day by day and minute by minute. He invests in building relationships with each of his students, his families, his teammates, and his coworkers. His focus on student and staff accountability ensures Wolf Meadow students meet and surpass their potential. Mr. Richter holds high expectations for each of his students. His students rise to the challenge and consistently participate through their learning, show and explain their thinking, and learn to value mistakes as part of their learning process. Mr. Richter works with all students in a respectful and consistent manner, and because of this, his students become respectful and consistent. Mr. Richter models excellence in his relationships around the building as well. He is a mentor and sounding board for teachers on his team and throughout the school. He contributes daily to unite and support all. Mr. Richter's impact through education makes Wolf Meadow a great place to learn and work. Congratulations on your Impact Through Education Award.
Congratulations. Thank you for all you do.
And our final Wolf Meadow honoree this evening is Ms. Tina McGriff. Would Ms. McGriff and her family please come forward? Ms. McGriff is the conductor that keeps the Wolf Meadow School train moving. She organizes and coordinates the daily events that take place in the school building. She communicates these goings-on in an efficient and effective manner. Ms. McGriff is the thread between teachers, students, staff, parents, and parents, and she respectfully includes all of these stakeholders. Ms. McGriff never fails to jump in and help regardless of what is needed. She can be found helping any student, staff, or parent around the building. She checks in on students to ensure they have a champion and an advocate. She notices when teachers or staff need an extra hand. The staff at Wolf Meadow describe Ms. McGriff as powerful, smart, and the ideal coworker. Ms. McGriff is a team player and a key member of the school's front office team. She's organized and runs the front office like a well-oiled machine. She has gone above and beyond to build relationships with families. She's often the first voice you hear and the first face you see when you arrive at Wolf Meadow. She is a shining example of what it means to make an impact through education. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you for all you do.
And Mr. Martin's going to take your picture. Now, we'll begin our recognitions for Impact Through Education Awards for Mount Pleasant High School, and I'd like to invite the Mount Pleasant High School Principal to come forward. Our first Mount Pleasant honoree this evening is Brendan Marshburn. Would Brendan please come forward with his family? Brendan is a shining star in the classroom with his leadership, character, and loyalty guiding his way. He's a positive influence on everyone he meets. He is gentle and patient when assisting other students. He carries himself with extreme integrity. No matter what you throw at him, he can figure it out. Brendan is kind, considerate, bright, and respectful. He is trustworthy and ethical in his interactions with students and teachers. Brendan thinks speculatively before he speaks and asks intuitive questions in class discussions. He is inquisitive, responsible, and eager to learn. He asks probing questions and is always looking to go beyond just surface-level responses. He strives to do his best and understand content purely for the sake of knowledge. Mount Pleasant High School is proud to present Brendan with this Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good job.
Our next Mount Pleasant High School honoree is Angel Thompson. Would Angel and her family come forward? Angel is a standout among her peers and is one determined young lady. She was diagnosed with brain cancer at a young age and has worked to overcome the challenges it brought to her life. While she was undergoing treatment, she founded Gifts from Angels to collect games for pediatric hospitals. She continues to be an advocate for pediatric cancer victims, volunteering, and speaking at events to raise awareness and support. Angel is in the top 5% of her class and is involved in multiple clubs and activities at Mount Pleasant High. She also finds time to volunteer in numerous community activities and organizations. She has compassion that pushes her to reach out to those who are struggling or hurting and can always bring a smile to others' faces and hearts. Angel plans to attend North Carolina State University and pursue a degree in Animal Science, Veterinary Medicine in the fall. She will be an asset wherever she goes and to any community in which she settles. Congratulations on this Impact Through Education Award.
Congratulations.
Our next Impact honoree is Ms. Katie Coffin. Would Ms. Coffin and her family please come forward? Katie has a passion for teaching young minds and agriculture, but Katie has a love for seeing students grow and mature. Ms. Coffin views every student as special in one way or another, and she looks for ways she can help develop their minds regardless of whether they are a quiet student who needs encouragement or an outspoken student who may need direction in the right way. She's always thinking of ways to recognize students who don't normally receive recognition in the Agriculture Department. She puts in so much time outside of school. She's always at the school feeding animals or advising the FFA program students. Her love of FFA shows with her commitment to always helping students and creating opportunities for them to compete in events. She not only teaches students at Mount Pleasant High School, but she is a positive example for every staff member at the school, which is why she was selected to receive this Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And our final Mount Pleasant High School honoree this evening is Ms. Kristy Clary. Would Ms. Clary and her family please come forward? There are some staff members within departments who help their respective area function optimally, and then there are unsung heroes. Their work is not known to the general population due to reasons such as confidentiality. One such person at Mount Pleasant High School is the social worker Kristy Clary. Ms. Clary is a calming influence on the students, parents, and other staff members. Her door is always open to students, and she goes above and beyond to make sure they have the help and services they need, no matter what that may involve. She's always ready with a smile and usually comes up with a solution to any problem that's presented. She has a wealth of knowledge and compassion, and the entire school reaps the benefit of her commitment and hard work. Congratulations, Ms. Clary, on this Impact Through Education Award, and thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you for all you do. Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Boone. Board Members, we will move to 4.02, the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month, and we will have Dr. Marion Bish to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the Board, it's good to see you on this beautiful Carolina day, isn't it? So today, we want to say hello to all of you and all of our viewing audience, and it is my pleasure to introduce to you Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for March. As always, we extend our thanks and gratitude to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their generosity and sponsorship. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for March is Emma Morawski, a third-grade teacher at Patriot STEM Elementary School. At this time, I'd like to invite Mrs. Morawski and her family and any members of her school's administrative team to come forward. Mr. Vaughn and his prize patrol visited Ms. Morawski in her classroom last week and presented her with her award. But tonight, we want to share the nomination that was submitted by a parent writing about Ms. Morawski. The parent said, "Ms. Morawski is a ray of sunshine for her students during a year that hasn't been easy. She provides a safe, fun, and loving environment for her students and is always planning special days to celebrate with them. She's been a blessing to our son, and we will miss her so much when he goes to fourth grade. Ms. Morawski, thank you for creating that safe and loving environment for your students and for being a bright spot during this very challenging year. Congratulations on your selection as Cabarrus County Schools' Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month."
Congratulations. Thank you for all you do. Okay, Items Number Five, approval of the minutes have been moved to April. We will move to Items Under Number Six. And I will begin with reminding the Board that we have the finishing of our planning session for Thursday, March the 31st, at 5:30 to 9:00 here at the Ed Center. And also, we'd like to say thank you to our SROs that are here with us tonight and for covering our meetings. We appreciate you being here. And also, later in committee reports, just so the Board understands, this afternoon, Ms. Sandage Committee met for the first time, and there is going to be a name change to this committee. So the Board will just need to back in consensus agree to that, and I will let Ms. Sandage cover that when the time comes. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Kupicki for his superintendent comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to congratulate the J.M. Robinson Boys Basketball Team on a phenomenal season that was capped off this weekend in Chapel Hill with a victory, and they are now the two-way state basketball champions. So congratulations to them. We also have had several other state champion winners over the course of the school season, which we will bring in in May to recognize all those various individuals. It's been a very rewarding athletic season for our athletes this year. They've represented the Cabarrus County School System quite well and in fine fashion. I will say the thing that struck me the most Saturday, watching the boys play at the end of the game, was the sportsmanship that they demonstrated. It was a very hard-fought game. They won by two points, but the way they conducted themselves at the end of the game and the sportsmanship that they showed was a real tribute to the parents of this community and the school system. I was very proud to be, and honored to be there as a superintendent, but what struck me the most was the fine gentleman in the way they conducted themselves with their sportsmanship. So I commend them, their coach, and mainly their parents for obviously teaching them the right set of values and how they handle themselves in a situation like that. They were just, the way that they conducted themselves, the way they congratulated their teammates, the way they congratulated their opponents, the way they conducted themselves on the court, it was impressive. I was very proud of them and very happy that they won. So congratulations again to the J.M. Robinson Boys Basketball Team. The month of March is filled with a number of special observances. In our district, in this month, we are celebrating Youth Art Month, Music in Our Schools Month, and Theater in Our Schools Month. Student artwork is on display here at the Education Center, and our band and choral students, as well as our theater students, are scheduled to perform in a number of events throughout the month. Our celebration of the arts will culminate at our Youth Arts Festival with a showcase of visual and performing arts on Friday, April 1st. The showcase will be held here at the Education Center from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. There will be a number of live performances throughout the evening, so I encourage all to attend. You will not be disappointed. As you know, we have incredibly talented students here in the Cabarrus County Schools, and I would encourage everyone here to take some time this evening as you're leaving to observe some of the artwork that is on display. It is very impressive. March is also National School Social Work Month, and last week, we celebrated National School Social Work Week. School social workers are committed to improving the educational success and the social and emotional development of all students. They offer a range of services for including assessments, individual and group counseling, crisis prevention and intervention, parent education and training, collaboration with the community agencies and organizations, program coordination, policy development, and addressing barriers to student attendance. Cabarrus County Schools is proud to have such an excellent group of school social workers in our district. We are grateful for their passion, for their commitment and advocacy in the lives of our students and families. We also celebrated National School Breakfast Week last week. School breakfast, as you know, provides a healthy and energizing start to the day for our students, and studies continue to show that students who eat a healthy breakfast have better concentration and memory and are more alert and have better achievement in school. Our school nutrition department serves nutritious school breakfasts, complete with fruit and low-fat or fat-free milk to ensure students are fueled for learning every school day. We also want to say congratulations to Jessica Parker, a science teacher at Cox Mill High School, who has been selected to participate in the 2022-2024 North Carolina Science Leadership Fellows Program. The program develops science educational leaders in North Carolina, enhancing the professional competencies and leadership abilities necessary for them to operate effectively in various leadership positions in science education. The program is sponsored by the North Carolina Science, Mathematics, and Technology Education Center and Burroughs Welcome Fund. Congratulations to Jessica. I'm also excited to share that Ellis Jewelers is sponsoring its 11th Annual Future Designer Contest. Students in grades three to 12 can enter an original design for a ring or pendant. Winners will have their design crafted into a piece of fine jewelry, and entries are due by 5:30 on Friday, April 15th. If you want to find more details, please look for the entry form on our district website under the Headlines and Features section. Cabarrus County Schools Career and Technical Education, along with Kannapolis Cabarrus County Schools Career and Technical Education, along with Kannapolis City Schools' Career and Technical Education, and the Cabarrus County Education Foundation, will host Career Connections Day for high school juniors and seniors on Tuesday, April 5th, at the Cabarrus Arena and Event Center. The event is not your typical career fair. It's an opportunity for students and businesses to meaningfully connect and interact. The event also includes a business expo in partnership with the Cabarrus Regional Chamber, Central Lena Workforce Development Board, Cabarrus Economic Development, and Rowan Cabarrus Community College. So we would encourage all that can to stop by and enjoy the wonderful things that are going on at our Career Connections Day. Few reminders for some important dates that are coming up. March 28th is a Staff Development Planning Day, so there'll be no school for students. April 6th and 7th is our Cabarrus County Special Olympics Spring Games, and April 15th to 22nd is our spring break. And that is all.
Thank you. We will move to 6.03, and we will have Board Attorney comments. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, some of the things that I just wanted to bring, call to your attention in regards to public comments that we have every month, a little bit, a little bit, this is not comprehensive. Do not take it a comprehensive. If there's questions that you have, I can talk to you more about it in more detail. But what happens is in North Carolina, you have the statutory requirements, it's 115-C-41, which requires the board to provide for a public comment at a regular board meeting. The interesting aspect about that is that you're only required to have quarterly meetings. You don't have to have monthly meetings, and that would have to be the first Monday of January, April, July, and October of each year, or as soon thereafter as practicable. It also talks about 115-C-51 provides that public comments shall be provided during a regular meeting of the board, and provides the reasonable rules that may be adopted to govern it. Talking about the maximum time the speakers can speak, the designation of a speaker for a group, and then also, maintenance of order and decorum in the conduct of the hearing. Now, you may want to, you may be asking, well, what does that mean? And what can be, you know, what sort of limitations are, what, how expansive is public comments? And typically, the courts look at public comments as to what is the form? What is the form that is being, being provided by the government, in this instance, the board? Sometimes you hear free speech, and that certainly applies in this instance, but free speech can be limited to a certain degree because of the time, place, manner, and content. When you're talking about out on the street or on the sidewalk, that is open public forum. That's where typically debate could happen without any restrictions whatsoever. But however, when the board, when the statutes have been set up that requires this board to have public comments at every regular, at a regular meeting, once a month, or at a regular meeting, then it's a designated or a limited forum. And in that instance, you're, you're, you are still looking at what's the time, place, manner, content, things of that nature. So that when, if I were to come up, or if a public comment were to come up that did not involve this board, then Madam Board Chair, or at that point, if it's a, if a different chair, can certainly ask the speaker to get back on topic. And you say, well, what does that mean? Well, a public person can't come up and start talking about, you know, Sally had a great birthday party on Saturday, and let me tell you about the horse we had at the birthday party. That has nothing to do with the business of this before this board. So that person could be asked, please get on topic so we can hear what you want to say about what we're conducting. Not that that's going to happen, and not that it has happened, but let's give you, I want to give you an exaggeration about what's going on. So that this board needs to be hearing about what this board can do and what this board handles, not what is outside of this board's realm. Also, you may hear about, you know, we're talking about sometimes public, personal attacks. Personal attacks are not proper in a form, form such as this. Concerns are, and it's hard to sometimes determine, determine between personal attack and concern. So concerns can be brought up, concerns about something that may be going on. We don't like the fact that bus 413 is coming to our neighborhood and picking up the children at 6 o'clock in the morning. It should be another bus at another time because it's much quieter. That would certainly be a concern. But if they wanted to personally attack the bus driver because he or she's driving the bus and saying they're doing it, they're doing a bad job, or whatever it may be, that starts getting to the, outside the lines. So you, this board can certainly limit public attacks, and it shouldn't be public attacks. It should be concerns that are raised to this board. And then what happens is, I do want to talk about, not that we've gotten to this point, that has happened unfortunately in some other parts of this state, is disruptions, is when it's gotten so bad that it's been disruptions, that the person or the group can be called down, can be asked to leave, and if they choose not to, then that could be lead to a criminal charge, and we don't want that to happen. So, you know, people can raise concerns, people can raise appreciation. You've heard tonight, some great teachers, great students that we have. You know, we want to hear positives, but we also want to, if there's a concern, that we need to have, we need to hear the concern, and hopefully, it doesn't get over into the attack mode. So I hope that answers some questions or some thoughts. It may have you start thinking about some things, and, and as you have some questions, certainly ask, and we can may be able to step in for another public comment or another topic at the next meeting or some other meetings, just to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, may I have a point of privilege to speak briefly? Thank you. Before we hear from the public, I wanted to speak briefly on a matter that took place at the break at our meeting last month following public comment. During the last public comment, statements were made that I do not wear my mask 100% of the time when I'm out in our community. Also, at that break, I spoke with one of the speakers, asking him to get his facts straight. I wanted him to know, and the community, that I have not worn my mask 100% of the time when I'm out at meetings or events. He was correct in this regard. I wanted to let him know that I am fully vaccinated and received a booster shot. I believe that vaccinations and getting a booster shot helps in reducing the spread of COVID and a person's symptoms of COVID and hospitalization. I hope that everyone makes their own mind up based on research and their viewpoints. Also, there has been times that I have not worn my mask 100% of the time. Earlier this year, when I went to the Lincoln Reagan Dinner, I did, did not have my mask on when I went into the building. I did speak with some people at the meeting without my mask at that event. I was thirsty and famished. After getting something to drink and eat, I put my mask on for the balance of the evening. At other events, I've tried to mask, but cannot say that I was masked the entire time. Getting the facts straight, yes, I have not been masked at times, and I have voted for masking in the school. My decisions to vote for masks were based on the positivity rates, number of cases, and other metrics. When I voted for mandating masks, I did not expect the children, teachers, and administrators to be masked 100% of the time at school, but hoped that they would mask as much as possible. I was concerned when I heard that a child was suspended for not having a mask on, and I'm, I am glad that that was corrected. I appreciate the opportunity to address this board, the community, and those present tonight. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. It is now time for public comment. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and an individual speaking for a group may be allowed up to five minutes at the direction of the board chair. The speakers will be called in the order in which the request was received. A person may not be substituted for a speaker, nor may one speaker donate time to another speaker. If a speaker runs out of time, then the speaker may leave the additional information with the board clerk. If a speaker or attendee willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts this meeting and refuses to leave after being asked by the board chair, then the speaker may be escorted out and can be arrested for trespassing or disrupting an official meeting. And we will begin with speaker number one, Jonathan Allman.
If you will just key the mic.
Good to see everybody again. Last Thursday was the two-year anniversary of when Roy Cooper declared a state of emergency. After two years, North Carolina still has a 99% recovery rate for all ages, 99.996 recovery rate from kids 0 to 17. It was such an emergency that masks were canceled for the state of the year. April 28th, 2021 versus March 1st, 2022, there were 54,000 cases versus 59,000 cases, 45, or 43,000 hospitalizations versus 45,000 hospitalizations, 727 deaths for, versus 1,838 deaths. North Carolina has received 5.8 billion in federal funding. We have only spent 2.5, 0.57 billion. Cabarrus County was allotted 61.9 million and has spent 35.7 million. What was that spent on? What, what, what is the remaining balance going to be spent on? Was the claim to keep kids safe by wearing masks in school because they couldn't be vaccinated really a cover for receiving unnecessary amounts of money that we haven't spent yet? By the way, a New York Times article that came out, Pfizer shots is far less effective in five to 11-year-olds than older kids. New data shows that percentage was 12% effective. Senator Wiley Nickel voted to sustain Roy Cooper's veto. It's Roy Cooper's second veto this year and a record extending 71st veto since he took office in 2017 of SB 173. Mr. Nickel said, "The governor left this decision to local governments to determine the best policies to protect our schools and our communities. This was yet another attempt by Republicans to politicize masks and would be, would have resulted in more government overreach." Well, that's perfect. Roy Cooper pushed it back to y'all with the 71st veto. So let's make a vote for parents' choice forever on masks, no matter what the cases are, because the recovery rate is still 99.997 for kids 0 to 17. And I didn't check the numbers today, but I'm going to go out on a limb and say that Cabarrus County has 100% recovery rate for kids 0 to 17. I feel like this is all political because after November, this year's an election year, and after November, we're probably going to have another black winter of death that, you know, we're all still here from, so. I would also encourage all of you, if you don't know who Edward Dowd is, a former BlackRock investor, managing about 15 billion worth of assets, has come out working with people who work in the insurance industry, looking at the excessive deaths from last year, and they all flow with the vaccine. They're just released 55,000 pages from the Pfizer clinical trials. I think you all need to look into that. At some point, people aren't going to be able to do this. All I was following the CDC, all I was following Roy Cooper, all I was following Department of Human Health Services. Someone's going to have to take accountability with the numbers that are coming out. Thank you, guys, for your time. See you next week.
Thank you. Speaker number two, Brandon Matthews.
All right, other one.
Good evening. Can you key the mic? Yes, thank you.
First off, thank you for apologizing. Nobody, none of us parents want to put you on the spot where you're publicly commulated to apologize. When our kids are put in front of the school, in front of their peers, when they're not wearing that mask, they're embarrassed. So in order for change to happen, accountability has got to be brought to the table. You should not have been the only person that apologized. The pictures go across this whole board of everybody not wearing them. But it comes a point to where, when they walk in indoors, y'all feel like you become guardians. You're not the guardians. You don't pay their health insurance, you don't put the roof over their head, you have nothing to do with how that kid is raised. You're there for one purpose, to teach a curriculum, to make sure that they succeed in the future. So it's really simple. Us parents just want you to let us parent, and y'all do what you're elected for. The teachers need your help. The teachers have been contacting us about help because they're scared to go to your principals. They're scared their jobs are on the line. Y'all need to figure out a way to sit down with them and back them up. You're losing great teachers, and it's only getting worse. So take the time, go to each of these schools, and have a meeting with the teachers. When they contact me for help, we got a big problem. The balance, when I went to school, the balance seemed even between the teachers and the parents. Right now, that balance is off. The teachers are losing all respect. They're walking out the door. We're not accomplishing nothing. So just take the time, spend it on what needs to be done, figure out what the problem is with these teachers. Let the kids be kids, and just stop. Let us be the parents. We know what's best for our kids. So I appreciate what y'all do. I'd hate to be in your position because seeing both sides of the story is impossible, or making both sides happy is impossible. So I really appreciate what you did. It meant a lot to a lot of people. Nobody wanted to call you out individually. It's just somebody's got to be the martyr. Somebody's got to be held accountable. And if our kids are going to be put in the spotlight, then the people who cause it need to be put in the spotlight. So I once again appreciate everything y'all do. So y'all keep. My bad.
Thank you.
Mic drop.
That's okay.
Bye, y'all. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Speaker number three, Dan Marshall. Are we okay back there? Good evening.
Okay. Do I need to push something here?
You're good. It's all good.
Good? All right. Well, my name is Dan Marshall. I'm here tonight at the invitation of your board chair, Lake Grimsley. I represent local government ministry, branch of Capital Ministries. My ministry is to serve those who serve in government by praying for them, listening to them, and encouraging them. First of all, I thank each one of you for choosing to serve our community. Serving in a governing role is a special calling. It's demanding of your time, your abilities, and at times, your patience. On occasion, it can require having a thick skin. Each one of you have taken on a serious responsibility. You are accountable before God and the citizens of Cabarrus County to serve with diligence, integrity, and humility. Further, your duties to our community are in addition to your other roles, in your family, your business, your church, and your neighborhood. Therefore, the citizens you serve should be ready to encourage you when needed. As a resident of Cabarrus County, I have a responsibility to each of you. As part of fulfilling my responsibility, I volunteer with Capital Ministries. I provided a packet for each one of you that gives more details about who we are, why we serve, and what we do. I have left them with Sarah Hammond's. My contact information is attached to that packet. I encourage you to contact me if need be, and I look forward to meeting with each one of you in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Speaker number four is Norman McCullough.
Good evening. How is everyone? Before I start, I'd just like to give out this flyer. It's talking about the program that was held at the library, celebrating Black educational institutions in Cabarrus, Concord, and various other cities. It was a wonderful program. We had about 75 to 80 people come out, and so it was exciting to see what the city and Cabarrus County is willing to do with respect to Black history. Okay? My name is Norman J. McCullough, Sr. I'm a retired college instructor, author, administrator, and mentor to hundreds of students in Cabarrus County. I have been teaching African Black history since 1973. And as a retiree at Rowan Cabarrus Community College, I also taught Black history. In fact, I was their first teacher of Black history at the college. So I have three points. And the three points having to do with, a thank you, I met with some of you last week regarding the curriculum that's being revised to include many aspects of Black history. We want to make sure our young people know, especially about the Black great leaders of this community, people like Warren C. Coleman, Roxanna and Thomas Coleman, and Rufus Barringer. We want them to know about Reverend J.W. Hood, bishop for 40 years, Dr. Joseph C. Price, C.C. Griffin, Reverend Frank Low... Griffin, Reverend Frank Logan, Alan T. Small, and many others. The fact that these young people are coming out of these schools without any knowledge of these people is obscene. It is not right. So I know you have, especially you, Ms. Grimsby, have heard my proposal. Ms. Sandage is also aware of my proposal, and that is to make sure that the curriculum includes many of these people. So I want to thank you for that. The expansion, I guess, is really not enough. I'm requesting a resolution by this board that Black history be celebrated next year throughout the county. All the schools celebrate Black history. And I know Ms. Sandage would be very helpful in making sure that is done. Last but not least, you received some photos from Mr. Michael Anderson regarding that same program. Hopefully, you will use those photos in a manner of the highest respect. Those photos demonstrate what was happening at a time of severe segregation in this community. So hopefully, you will consider these points and understand there are people available to you, such as myself, who can assist you in all of these points. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Pam Escobar.
Yes. Oh, thank you very much.
Good evening. You need to key the mic. There you go.
There it is. All right. Thank you, everybody. Good evening. So let's talk about the calendar. I understand any changes regarding when we start and end our school year are up to the NC General Assembly, but you can put in a request. So what will that request be? You've heard from the Calendar Committee, and I wanted to share what people have told me. First, let's talk about this current school year. Spring break is a month away, and it feels very far away. Kids, teachers, families are exhausted, and they really wish that there was a break much sooner. And a suggestion I received was let's have spring break at the end of March or the end of the quarter, and then at Easter time, let's have a long weekend. So just take that Good Friday and that Easter Monday off. Now, second, starting on August 10th and ending by Memorial Day, which is a proposal. Many people support the idea of having exams before Christmas break. The board says it would help test scores and address learning loss. However, many people do not want to see this change for this school year of 2022, 2023. Families have planned vacations, summer camps, and many have already paid for activities for those first couple of weeks of August. Teachers also work during the summer and run summer camps and rely on that paycheck. If you submit this request, please ask for it to start in 2023, 2024 school year. The advance notice would help people plan. And I don't know if you're worried that this may be your one window of opportunity because of the pandemic and the legislator willing to listen. So one person did suggest a compromise, maybe a compromise start around August 15th this year and end by May 31st. The next year start by August 10th and end by Memorial Day or something like that. A teacher also shared with me that she doesn't like starting early in August because it would be too hot for recess for elementary school students, and they really need outside recess. And it would be difficult for kindergarten students to adjust to school without recess at the very beginning of the year. This could also hurt businesses that rely on high school students who work and also kids who are trying to save money over the break. So my recommendation is to listen to the community. That includes business owners, moms, dads, teachers, and students. I provided an open forum on my Facebook page, Vote for Pam Escobar, and the school district has the ability to create surveys and get this feedback quickly. We've done it before when we were trying to decide whether to send our kids back under Plan A, Plan B, or to keep them home. So whatever you decide about the calendar, please communicate it, explain the why, explain the how, and as soon as the General Assembly gives you a response, communicate it. Open communication matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, board members, we will move to items under eight for reports, starting with 8.01, committee reports, and I will begin with Ms. Sandage regarding our new committee, and we will discuss that name change.
So if I believe, if I remember correctly, it was the Student Services Steering Committee. And we changed that name to the School Committee, Community Engagement Committee. For short, we have got S C E C. So just a little bit about the committee. So we'll meet quarterly. That's already been identified, beginning in April 2022, and it'll be on Tuesdays, the third Tuesdays, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. This committee will follow the open meetings law, so it's a board committee. In addition to that, not this time, not right now, but we will be looking for a student, staff, and a community liaison. We are, again, just in the infancy stages of this, so we're not sure how we'll get those folks identified, but we will work really, really closely with staff in the district as well as the board as a whole to develop the curriculum, I'm sorry, not curriculum, but to develop the tasks that we will complete during this committee. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Board members, is everyone okay? I just need a consensus for that name change since it's a board devised committee. Everyone good? Okay, shake of the head. Okay, great. Mr. Walter, do you have any committee reports?
The Calendar Committee, but I guess we'll talk about that later.
We will, definitely. Okay. Ms. Fur, anything for you?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Blackwell.
I do. So first, I want to thank Ms. Grimsley for creating a new Literature and Supplemental Material Steering Committee. This important committee will review parental challenges to literature and supplement resources. Parents, we have a current policy regarding challenges to literature and supplemental materials. It's Policy 3210, and it has been uploaded to the board docs for this meeting for your convenience, and it can also be found on the CCS policy manual. I'd like to thank my fellow board members Denise Adcock and Carolyn Carpenter for their assistance in this committee, as well as our board attorney Jay White, who will serve on this committee with us. Parents, if you have any questions about this policy and related processes, please contact our chief of staff, Dr. Kelly Probst. And we also will have our first meeting, and that will be actually March the 28th. It will be here at the Ed Center, and that meeting will just be for the initial start of this committee.
Great. Thank you. Board members, any comments or questions regarding that committee? Hearing none. Ms. Carpenter, anything from you?
Not at this time.
Okay. Ms. Adcock?
Just have an update on the board intern student project that's going on, the service project in the schools. They want to extend the date to March the 25th to continue to take donations, and those schools are Jayden Robinson High School, Mount Pleasant Elementary School, Cox Mill High School, Hickory Ridge, and West Cabarrus High School. And as of Wednesday of this week, we have several of the schools that are already going to be starting their packing of these care packages within their schools. The students in these schools have stepped up in a tremendous way and want to really help with giving these packets for families and students that need help this way. So thank you.
Good information. Any comments or questions for Ms. Adcock? Hearing none. We will move to items under number nine, presentation. We will begin with 9.01, the Cabarrus County School Spotlight on Educators, and we will have our Teacher of the Year, Ashton Berry, to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and esteemed board members. I have another exciting presentation for you tonight. I wanted to start by thanking you for another opportunity to highlight the amazing things that are happening in schools across the Cabarrus County School District. These teachers, like so many across our district, continue to strive for and achieve excellence each and every day through their pedagogy and praxis. NPR's Jonathan Franklin explains, "Every February, the U.S. honors the contributions and sacrifices of African-Americans who have helped shape the nation. Black History Month celebrates the rich culture, cultural heritage, triumphs, and adversities that are indelible of our country's history. Tonight, I want to present you with a spotlight on five schools in our district who intentionally honored and celebrated Black History Month through their instruction in February." Our first featured school is Wolf Meadow Elementary. Mrs. Shannon Coleman and Mrs. Adrienne Nunu are the collaborating teachers. For Black History Month this year, Ms. Nunu and Ms. Coleman decorated the halls at Wolf Meadow with Black history facts. On the third through fifth grade side of the school, the yellow color-coded Black History Month facts educated students about prominent figures, both living and deceased. Red, yellow, and green color-coded facts were divided into subgroup categories, women, men, and general facts. Students were able to walk through the halls and learn something new by reading about each person. These displays served as windows, mirrors, and doors for our students and helped them make connections as they continued to work towards social studies mastery of standards such as understanding how events, individuals, and ideas have influenced the history of local and regional communities, analyzing the chronology of key historical events in North Carolina history, and analyzing the chronology of key events in the United States. Additionally, on the kindergarten through second grade side of the building, students were able to interact with images of Black historical figures by lifting folders to discover more information about how they affected change. Many students and staff were observed on both sides of the school, stopping to read information and commenting in passing that it was informative. Students also engaged in Black History Month discussions in digital kids during the month of February as well, learning about different people and their contributions as they worked towards mastery of standards such as understanding that history tells a story of how people and events changed society over time and identifying contributions of historical figures through various genres. Our second featured school this month is Irvin Elementary School. All students and staff at Irvin collaborated in order to honor and celebrate Black History Month. At Irvin Elementary School, staff and students participated in a space decorating contest for Black History Month. The contest was a joint school and home project. Staff decorated a space in the building using poster boards, bulletin boards, et cetera, while recognizing important figures in Black history or contributions of Black Americans. The theme of each of the spaces was dedicated collectively with students and connected to classroom instruction. Irvin staff explained to me that the decor was a combination of images, student-written work, poster boards, and artwork. After the collaborative spaces were ready, staff created a video that was then shared with families to show how Black History Month was celebrated and honored through the month at Irvin. Irvin families voted on their favorite space. It was a tight contest, and staff told me that there was actually a tie with two winners of the contest. When corresponding with school social worker Nakia Alsop, she explained to me that she personally enjoyed seeing what teachers and students came up with and seeing the faces of staff and students admiring the spaces. Our third featured school this month is Rocky River Elementary, particularly their art classes. Ms. Darian Barnett, the art teacher at Rocky River Elementary School, shared two examples of how she honored and celebrated Black History Month in her art classroom. To begin, fourth grade students at Rocky River read the book Tar Beach by Faith Ringold, which was heavily inspired by Faith Ringold's artwork. This artwork features Ringold's dreams and various stories she wants to tell. After finishing the story, students were asked to create a personal piece of artwork based on something they would like to accomplish in the future or something they have dreamed about. They were then asked to create a story to go along with their drawing and place fabric squares around it to create a quilt-like border. This project connects to fourth grade art skills and standards such as explaining how place and time influence ideas, issues, and themes found in art and applying skills and concepts learned in other disciplines such as math, science, language arts, social studies, and other arts in the visual arts. Additionally, fifth grade students at Rocky River worked collaboratively in art class to read and learn about a figure from Black history that they were able to choose. Student teams recorded what they learned and worked together to create a life-size portrait of the person they were studying. They researched various African-American artists, musicians, inventors, athletes, civil rights leaders, and icons. Ms. Barnett explains, "First, we learned about the importance of Black History Month and the many things that Black inventors created that we use today. After creating their projects, students presented their work in order to teach their classmates something that they would have never known otherwise about that person." Ms. Barnett also explains, "After working in groups, we discussed how students worked as a team, what went well, what didn't go well, and what they could change next time when we work together." They were assigned different roles for the assignment, artist, writer, researcher, presenter. This project connects to fifth grade art skills and standards such as understanding the balance of individual roles and collaborative skills to create art and creating art using the processes of drawing, painting, weaving, printing, stitchery, collage, mixed media, sculpture, ceramics, and current technology. The fourth featured school this month is R. Brown McAllister Elementary School. Second grade teacher, Ms. Mary Claire Donahue, graciously recorded a video explaining her lesson for us. And I'm not sure if I can click it, but if you'll click there to watch it. You might have to exit out of.
Hello, my name is Mary Claire Donahue, and I am a second-year, second-grade teacher at R. Brown.
Yep.
Hello, my name is Mary Claire Donahue, and I am a second-year, second-grade teacher at R. Brown McAllister Elementary, and I am here to tell you about what our second graders at R. Brown did during Black History Month. So we have studied a different Black historical figure every day in the month of February to connect to our standard of understanding the impact of historical figures on the world around us. So many of those historical figures were alive during the Civil Rights Movement or were leaders during the Civil Rights Movement, such as MLK. And I realized as I was teaching that my students had a hard time conceptualizing how recent that era was, and I could tell when they would ask questions like, "Didn't MLK free the slaves?" So I knew I had to do something to really make that connection tangible that the Civil Rights era was much more recent than you might believe. So I have a fantastic connection to that, and that is because my grandmother, Rochelle Horowitz, organized the transportation to the March on Washington. So she was the assistant to Bayard Reston, who was one of the main organizers, and she made sure that the buses full of people made it to Washington, D.C. that day. So because of my fantastic connection, I decided to set up a Zoom call with all of the second graders at our school so that they could have a chance to talk to her and hear from a firsthand perspective what it was like during the Civil Rights era and while she was at and organizing the March on Washington. So that experience was wonderful. She was so excited to do it and did a fantastic job talking to our students and making connections to them. I remember one of the first things she said to them was, "One day, you'll have to make a choice as to whether or not you are going to do something about the injustice or unfairness that you see in the world." So our students were avid listeners as she explained what it was like to be there that day and what it was like to grow up in a world where people weren't treated equally. And our students had lots of fantastic questions, which was my favorite part. They had some silly and sweet ones, like, "Were you friends with MLK?", to which her response was, "No, because he was a bit too famous, but I am proud to say that he did know my name and would say, 'Hello, Rochelle, how many buses are coming today?'" So our students were so excited to hear about all the people that she had met in 1963 and all the experiences that she had had. They asked questions like, "Were you scared?", and her response was, "Sometimes it's good to be scared because that means that you'll be prepared." And they were a little bit scared that there could be violence on that day, and they were really prepared for how to deal with it peacefully if there was, but luckily, things stayed peaceful. So watching our second graders ask questions and really be able to connect with an era that seems so long ago to them was fantastic, and I am very. And I am very lucky to have Rochelle Horowitz as my Grams. So, we have a slide here in front of you that's what we showed our students right before we met with her virtually. There's just some pictures of some professional interviews that she's had. There's a Times Magazine interview that she is featured in about the march. And here's a picture of our students on that day with my grandmother up on the big screen and all of them gathered around asking questions and listening. So, I appreciate you letting me be here today to share about that. Thank you.
And there is one more school, if we can go back to the original slides. Thanks so much. Our fifth and final featured school this month is Concord High School, specifically their IB program. Through my correspondence with teachers Marie Deal and Megan Winfield, they explained to me that Concord High School hosts an IB seminar almost every Friday, where we celebrate the IB mission statement. Our main emphasis, they say, is intercultural understanding and respect, especially as they have moved through the National Hispanic-- I'm sorry. Especially as they have moved through National Hispanic Heritage Month, Native American Heritage Month, and this past Black History Month. Ms. Deal and Winfield also passed along a summary by one of their students, Colin Monte, an IB senior, describing his engagement with their IB seminar celebrating Black history and identity. He explains, and I am going to read his whole statement because it's beautiful, "The ability to connect one's heritage and develop an identity based on and challenging the notions of the past is vital for many Black individuals across the globe. Through student-led presentations about Afro-Latin cultures, students learned about the differences and similarities amongst the cultures of Black people everywhere. Students gained a deeper understanding of how different nations and people celebrate and embody the experience of those of African descent. Furthermore, students learned about how quilt-making is an integral part of the Black American experience, allowing modern African-Americans to connect with their history and challenge the disadvantages they face. Students were then given the opportunity to express their own identity through the creation of paper quilt squares. The activity demonstrated to our students the expression of identity, particularly African-American identity, through art and creativity." And that was Colin Monte, CHS IB senior, class of 2022. Pictured here, you can see students Matthew Thornton and Andron McElveen presenting in their second language of Spanish about Afro-Latin cultures in Cuba. And here are students Rahul, Andron, and Siddharth presenting about identities in Afro-Latin cultures, particularly about the African influence in cuisine and music. After the student presentations, students viewed a video about Bisa Butler, a Howard University graduate known for her creative quilting and textile work. Ms. Butler was educated by the famous school of artists known as AfriCobra. According to the Art Institute of Chicago, Butler's quilts present an expansive view of history through their engagement with themes such as family, community, migration, the promise of youth, and artistic and intellectual legacies. Her textiles and quilting draw the observer in to the great detail and vibrancy of individualism. After the students viewed Bisa Butler's video, the CHS IB students were challenged and engaged in creating their own quilt square to celebrate their own personal and cultural identities. Here are Annette, Laurel, and Catherine holding up their quilt squares. And pictured here are sophomore IB students proudly representing their quilt squares. Finally, here is Alexia's tile celebrating her personal identity square, as well as the group's collective IB identity squares merged together to create their comprehensive CHS IB identity quilt. I'd like to take a moment to personally congratulate and thank each and every one of these fantastic CCS educators for their unwavering dedication to their students and public education. Our school district is better because each and every one of you are in it, and we are so grateful for you. You are all incredible and irreplaceable assets to the Cabarrus County School District. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Board members, we will now move to the approval of the consent agenda under items under number 10. May I have a motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented?
Senator.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, we will move to our action agenda, items under number 11. Starting with 11.01, we will have our 2022-2023 academic calendar proposal. And I will ask Ms. Burns to come to the podium. I know we've asked for the calendar committee to revisit, take a look at the proposal. And also, I guess, Mr. Walter, you're going to be speaking as the liaison for the board. Okay? Which would like to go first?
I don't mind. Doesn't matter. Thank you for having me up here tonight. As you know, the calendar committee met Thursday afternoon to discuss the two options the board is considering for an early start calendar beginning August 2022. The intent of that is to address learning loss from the two-year student. Learning has been affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. This is a board-initiated calendar and not a recommendation from the calendar committee. We just have to be clear with that. Because the law has not been changed, we can't recommend, but we do have some feedback, if that would be okay. The committee almost unanimously was in favor of an early start calendar. The fact the committee also supported the board with the early start for 20-- in fact, the committee also supports the board if they decide to start that this school year as opposed to next school year. As far as options, we had two options. Option A had spring break in April attached to Easter, like we've been doing in the past. And then, option B had spring break in March. I think it's the first week in March. It aligns with the three early colleges, their spring break, and Roan Cabarrus Community College's spring break. So, those were the two options. The calendar committee was very much in favor of option B to have spring break at the same week every year. And with having three high schools with that same calendar, that affects several hundred families in the district whose children, at this point, do not have spring break at the same time. As I said, the committee was-- unanimously said they would support a board decision, but I do need to share, you know, obviously, there were some concerns. The concern with the change being made for the school year because it is so late in the year, shortens the summer vacation. There are families who have planned vacations and staff with planned vacations. And that was-- those were a couple of the opposition to that. But then, there were other members who said, "If not now, when?", basically, and that they would support that. So, we don't do a vote. It was really a consensus. Mr. Walter and Ms. Carpenter were both in that meeting, so feel free to talk about your experience.
Sure. And thank you, Ms. Burns, for summarizing that meeting. The calendar committee has, what, a bunch of administrators? It has some teachers on it, had one or two parents as well?
There are four parents. There is an administrator from each level. Our-- we have an administrator from early college. We have our administrator from Wolf Meadow, the year-round calendar, or year-round school. We have teachers, and we have, I believe, at least one teacher assistant. So, it's-- and two board members. So, it is-- our in-cabinet is also included.
There's a wide variety of perspectives, which is what I appreciate from there. I think they also mentioned that there are other school systems that already have their calendar, and they are doing the early start.
Correct.
One of which was Roan County.
Right. Well, Roan is a restart district. So, they have calendar flexibility, but there are some other surrounding counties that have done that.
They're going that direction. But there were-- I mean, again, it wasn't necessarily unanimous. There was a lot of issues, some of which were brought up tonight from our speaker. There's a big discussion on the letters training and how that would affect the opportunity for teachers to have time. There was discussion about adding extra days into the calendar.
Yes.
Is that right as well?
Yes. Thank you for bringing that up. So, Sarah Reeves has said that she can work through the letters training, you know, if they know, basically, today. And that adding three additional early release days would be very helpful with that. And so, we put in the calendar, we added three additional early release days.
There was also the teacher that talked about the visiting teachers that wouldn't be here yet.
Yes. So, one of our schools-- can't remember which one.
I think it was Fur.
Yeah, I think it was Fur. They have eight visiting teachers for their immersion program, and four of them would not be in the country until August 10. And their principal has said that he would work with them.
But there's concern. I mean, obviously, you're open houses and what have you.
Yeah, right.
Students having those teachers would not have no idea who their actual teacher is until after the start of the school year. So, that was their-- My kind of thought is if we're making such a major change to this, we need-- really need input from more stakeholders than just the committee. And we're under a time constraint, but I think the focus of the committee really was, what's best for students, and is this really going to help students for going that direction? So, I think that's my recollection of that meeting.
Sounds correct.
Thank you. Ms. Carpenter, any comments?
Well, I kind of got the same thing. And a lot of comment had been made. We had already approved this calendar. And so, a lot of people went ahead and made plans with that. Also, there was a comment that the summer programs had already-- what was it, the 28th? Was it was not going to finish until the 28th? Was that correct?
Yes.
Dr. Hill, is that correct?
Okay, yeah.
Wasn't it the 28th it wasn't even going to be through?
Right. That's the summer jumpstart.
The summer jumpstart program. And so, when we had approved it, they went ahead and had made their plans. And I know that we have gotten numerous emails. I'm sure all of us have. And I know a lot of the emails said, "We went ahead and made our plans for this year." And so, I mean, the ones that I-- they said that, you know, they thought it was a good idea, but they would prefer-- and as we all know, that they have really done a lot of stuff the last two years. And that's why they went ahead and made plans. And so, I really think that the gist I got that they liked it, but they would rather it go and start next year, is the gist that I had gotten.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any other comments or questions? Ms. Adcock, anything for you?
Just a clarifying question. So, you made the comment that the board recommended this change and not the calendar committee?
Yes, ma'am. This is not-- generally, in the way we generally bring-- we will meet as a committee three or four times, develop a calendar, and then bring it to the board for approval. This is different because we already brought a calendar to the board, and it was already approved. And this is a change that was initiated from the board level and just asked us to review it and give some feedback.
Okay. I guess my other question, Ms. Grimsley, is, I mean, I don't remember. As a board, did we vote on this? Or--
We didn't have to vote on it. We did have it on the discussion item one night for the proposal of the calendar. So, what has to happen here is, in order for us to get this on our legislative agenda, we have to address it. The calendar committee, we said we wanted feedback from them. That's normally who we get our recommendations from. But we had already approved a calendar. But there's a deadline date of April the 1st if we're going to make any type of changes at the state level. So, that is why it was necessary to, you know, get it back to the calendar committee, get it back to us, us make a decision. Not that I assume that we would make the change unless the board agreed and the calendar committee recommended it and/or the staff. But the staff, it cannot be their recommendation because we've already approved their calendar. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Blackwell.
So, just one, I guess, question regarding this. If we do bring this back to the legislation, would we be able to recommend it for next school year? Would that still be feasible to do if we were going to bring it to them as of April the 1st?
So, that's what we would be doing this for. The board should entertain a resolution. There are some other districts that have done that to make a change for an early start date to their calendar as well, several of our surrounding counties. But that's what we have to do, is to get this to our legislators that we would like to, you know, receive waivers or, you know, some type of condition to have an early start. And it is, it's Mooresville City, Cleveland, Roan. There's another one, I'm not sure, have all received waivers to have an early start. So, that's what got the conversation going.
So, that's an early start for the fall-- the next school year, meaning in August?
Well, they actually have an early start for this coming year.
Okay.
We would be asking for the 2023, 2024.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure. All right. Thank you.
Correct. Mr. Fur.
Well, I'm definitely in favor of an early start. But, you know, there's a lot of unseen work that goes on in the summer that most of us don't know about with facilities, custodial duties that, you know, they're up against the clock trying to get things done for-- already for when we've got school scheduled now. And, you know, you've got a lot of teachers and parents that have made deposits on vacations that they probably can't get back. So, I wish we'd have did this earlier, but, you know, like I said, we got to do it at some point, but it's not. We've got to wait the next school year.
Do you want to make another comment?
Sure. I mean, so it sounds like the consensus is for the following school year. So, we do want to make the change. But at some point, but not this coming year.
Ms. Sandage.
I already said everything. I'm good.
So, the number-one goal here is to decide if the board would like to do a resolution to present to the legislatures for our legislative agenda to have an early start calendar date. And the date, of course, I guess, now hearing all the feedback and the comments from the board members would be the 2023-2024 calendar year. Do I get a nod of the head that all are in agreement of that? And we can direct Mr. White to start a resolution process?
It has started. It is probably 90% completed. I need to have Dr. Kapicki look at it so I can present it to y'all March the 28th. I think we're going to be here on March the 28th or the next meeting, whatever it is, and I can present it to y'all for y'all's review so that I can get done. Now, what happens is the statute only allows the start of school for good cause or for a statutory reason, the Monday closest to April the 19th. So, what I'm going to do in the resolution, listening to what y'all said today, is I'll have two resolutions, one which will be that, and then a second is can there be a sooner start date, such as August the 10th or August the 17th, closer to a Monday to start the school?
Okay, we're talking the following year.
Yes, sir. It will be ready for this year if y'all wanted to do a resolution this year, but y'all will be ready to go rock and roll in on March the 28th or the next time you have a meeting.
Thank you. So, we heard from the calendar committee, and we've definitely received lots of feedback. And we understand that people have already made plans. That would be, you know, a hardship for a lot. We appreciate everyone agreeing that it is the right thing to do, you know, based on the learning loss that these kids have, you know, endured, and that it will help us to put more time into the calendar to be able to have extra programs. I'm not sure how we address learning loss any more than allowing more time in our calendar to do additional, you know, programs.
So, Madam Chair, as the calendar committee is going to meet next month, I guess, to begin planning, do we want to give them any direction on the spring break issue? Should it be in March, or should it be during Easter week?
What is the pleasure of the board?
I think they push more towards March than April. And I mean, now, you can correct me, but they kind of leaned more towards March than they did April.
They did, but we didn't really get stakeholder input either. We really should do that.
But I would push towards March myself.
I'm going to ask Ms. Burns to speak. Yes.
Okay, I'm back. Yes, unanimously, the -- and we can say that with confidence, I believe, that aligning the district spring break with the early colleges and the community college so that families could -- they could count on the same week every year. And another thing we didn't bring up is when you do a calendar that the second semester is from the beginning of January to the end of May, having an April spring break is almost the end of the year. So that March week is really right in the middle, so it gives a really good midsemester break for students and staff.
Thank you. So can you just send out for our next meeting draft that the board members can see with -- have you already done that, or is that?
No, ma'am. We only did 2022-23. So we will meet as soon as we can.
Great.
And put together a 23-24 draft for you all to look at in April.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I have a statement.
Sure.
I just wanted to say thank you to the calendar committee for coming together so quickly. Just wanted to say we value their -- I value their time.
Thank you. Yeah, they're pretty amazing because it was like a one-day, can you all meet tomorrow or the next day? And almost everyone was there, so thank you for saying that. They are an incredible group.
That was great, and we do really do appreciate it. We know that was time-sensitive, so April the 1st was just around the corner. We didn't have a choice, but we appreciate everyone participating. So the takeaway is, the resolution is being prepared. It will be presented at our March the 28th, which is a budget session meeting night, so we'll add that to the agenda just for review. We will also add that to our legislative agenda as a priority, and I'm hearing that everyone agrees with the spring break timeframe for that year.
Can we do a survey and get some input from stakeholders, parents?
I tell you what, let's do this. Let's send that back to you, and you figure out what y'all need to do. How's that? And that'll probably work a little bit better.
That sounds fine. Thank you.
I'm thinking you've gotten a lot of opinions on it so far.
Sure.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Next, we will move to 11.02, the COVID safety guidelines. Board members, may I have a motion that Cabarrus County Schools remain mask optional?
Same move.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Mr. Fur. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Are we supposed to review the presentation, the metrics, or we're good?
I think we're good.
I can quickly.
Would you like to?
Yeah.
Briefly. Okay. Dr. Kapicki?
There is a slide there if you want to put it up on the metric. The metric, every metric-based guideline that you have is in green, so we are clearly in a mask optional situation. So if you can look at that, you can see that, and they are current metrics as of today.
Board members, I'm assuming everyone saw that in your board docs, correct? Have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Mr. Fur. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Next, we will move to 11.03, approval of policy 4700, student records. Ms. Burns, back to the podium. I'm assuming you've heard nothing else, no other comments or questions?
No one's contacted me.
Okay. May I have a motion that policy 4700, student records be approved on second read as presented?
Same move.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Adcock, a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes 6-1 with Ms. Carpenter as a nay. 11.04, approval of policy 4720, surveys of students. No comments or questions?
No, ma'am.
May I have a motion that policy 4720, surveys of students be approved on second read as presented?
Same move.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Adcock, a second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes 6-1 with Ms. Carpenter as a nay. Thank you very much. Moving to 11.05, we have the Roberta Cochran Road Improvement Contract Approval, and we will have Mr. Brian Cone to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. So obviously, there's no contract uploaded into your board docs. We did receive bids, but they were over the budgeted amount, and we have been requested by NCDOT to have a value engineering meeting with them, the contractor, and the civil engineer, to see what items in the scope we could reduce, hopefully to reduce the overall cost prior to bringing the contract back to this board for approval. That meeting will happen tomorrow, and there may be multiple meetings, depending on what the outcome is and if we need to go before the city of Concord as well.
So you'll bring this back next month?
Yeah, so we'll plan to bring it at the April meeting. I don't think that we can get it together before the March 28th meeting, and so it'll probably be the April meeting. Okay?
Thank you. Budget meeting. I'll give you a reminder at the end. It is. It's our extra Monday of the month for March, all the ends. Okay, we will have 11.06, the HVAC controls upgrades, and we will have Mr. Chuck Taylor to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Kapicki, I'm here to seek your approval for sole source with train for controls upgrades at three of our wonderful schools.
And you have had no comments or questions? Or you've answered those, I should say. Board members, may I have?
We did have a question last month regarding our policy on sole source.
Yes, sir.
And that policy said that we had to have justification from our finance director. We got that today, or at least you handed it to me.
Yes, sir.
Can that be uploaded into board docs?
I hand-delivered it to every board member, does it?
Can we get that into the board docs?
We can.
Okay, with that, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
All right.
Any other comments or questions? May I have a motion to approve the HVAC controls upgrades as presented?
Same move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Walter, a second by Ms. Sandage. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
So with that, Ms. Carpenter reminded me that I did not remind everyone that we do have an extra board meeting Monday, the 28th, which is a budget work session. It will begin at our normal 6 o'clock time. And then, of course, then our planning session is that Thursday, the 31st, which will be here as well from 5:30 until 9:00. Any other comments or questions?
We had two county commissioners join us today. That was appreciated.
We do. We did. We absolutely did. So Commissioner Kiger and Commissioner Strain were here with us tonight. We appreciate them being with us this evening. Okay, board members, that concludes our business for this meeting, and I will ask that we have a motion that the board convene in closed session to consult with an attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A3 and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A6.
Same move.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Adcock, a second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, we will say goodnight to our viewing audience. Thank you.